I now call to order the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting time being seven thirty-two P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Clerk, may your roll call please?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? Thank you. Um, now the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items, please sign at the sheet at the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Okay. No public comment. Um, on to the next item, uh, proclamation for Arbor Day. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this and then, uh, sign it away. Um, whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of topsoil, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, leaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable, are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Kaylor Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four as Arbor Day in the Town of Wellington, and urge all fellow citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect trees and encourage citizens to strategically plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generations. All right, next we will have a presentation from Ms. Kelly Huddling on the Main Street Revitalization.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Um, Kelly Huddling, Deputy Town Administrator. So before you tonight is an update on our strategic planning, or excuse me, no, this is the Main Street one. Sorry! Um, two items back to back kinda messed me up. Um, so, uh, for revitalizing Main Street projects. So this is really a legacy project for our town. Um, we've received, um, a variety of different grants totaling over four-point-four million dollars um, to revitalize Main Street and our downtown core. Those, the main project goals for this will be street infrastructure, nuisance drainage, pedestrian and ADA improvements. I will say that because this is a state highway, a lot of the things are, um, designated by CDOT about what we can and can't do. And so there's some elements still of public process that we can still engage with folks. So we're about to enter right now into that thirty percent design phase, which enables us as a community to, and that's where actual meaning, meaningful feedback comes. So, um, with that, I've included a list of community stakeholders. Um, Wellington, we are fortunate that we are small, tight-knit, tight-knit communities. So there'll be a lot of direct community outreach with folks. Um, on that list, some people in businesses and buildings will be more directly impacted. So their property might be impacted. So they might have a little bit more, um, elements of direct outreach. Um, so our consultants, J B Engineering, may be reaching out to them directly. They may be getting um, brochures in the mail if their property is directly impacted. And then there's going to be a larger community impact since this is a project that, um, is, is for all. It's for our, our community. It's for our visitors. Um, it's for all different populations that we serve here in Wellington. So, um, wanted to get those things down. Um, and if you, if you see anything that we're missing, please let me know that tonight if there's anything that you would like to be mentioned. Um, so of course, there's gonna be stakeholder engagement at different levels. Um, I spoke with the consultant, J B Engineers, uh, today, and we are gonna do a public meeting on May twenty-first. So in lieu of your work session, um, we are going to do kind of an open house town hall, and that will be real community engagement about the design of Cleveland Avenue and Fifth Street. Um, cause that's where some of the drainage will go on Fifth Street. Um, and we will do a full messaging on this. Again, the date was just set right before this meeting. I had intended to tell you May broadly. Um, but I'm, I'm excited that we have a date on, it, to go on that point. Um, and then for folks that can't attend this meeting, um, we'll, we'll figure out what element of, um, online engagement we can do. Um, cause then that's really gonna kick off. Once we have public feedback for this first part of the thirty percent design, then we can, you know, get, go full force into designing through the summer and fall, so we can get ready for construction. Um, so just like any project we do, there'll be elements of, um, an informational campaign. So the website, press releases, social media, nextdoor.com post. Um, Jerry is, uh, our new Senior Communications Specialist, and he's doing a fantastic job getting the word out on things. So um, there'll be lots of different ways that we'll engage, and it will look different throughout the process. So we might be focused on design right now, but later on, when we get into construction next year, it might be more like road closures, or here's how you access that business. So I don't have all the answers today for you, and I don't have all the timelines. Um, but I know that we are committed to, um, public engagement, and that's something that the board had identified in the strategic plan, is that ongoing transparent feedback. Any questions or concerns?
There's more.
Um, I would suggest also, like, personally canvassing the downtown and old town neighborhoods, just knowing some of my neighbors and how they prefer to communicate. Um, I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Trustees.
Um, so I would definitely say it in this community reach-out and design phase, I have yet to hear what street to what street is actually under construction. Um, so I think that might be a huge kudos. I don't know. Is that something, where is the construction starting and where is it ending?
Uh, primarily, primarily on first through fifth and sixth, we really don't know how far it's gonna go into Sixth Street. And that's where kind of the, the design will figure out, um, how far it's able to go down. And then Cleveland, um, so that's the Cleveland part. And then Fifth Street, there'll be some work on, um, waterline issues and the drainage. So again, I, I'm not the engineer and, um, uh, but in general, it's Cleveland Avenue, um, and then a bit of Fifth to Kennedy.
Got it. So it stops possibly before railroad tracks then. It won't extend beyond that.
Yes.
Perfect. So, um, Safe Routes to School might also be an additional person to have in, for the additions, if you're looking at mobility and ADA and items like that. Um, I am very grateful. I did see the Ark of Llamer County added on to this discussion. Um, the other item that might be of topic question or conversation for stakeholders is access from the Cleveland sidewalks into businesses. I don't know who handles that aspect of it. Um, it's my understanding that we would only be covering drainage, gutters, and some ADA accessibility to sidewalks. Do we have any conversations going on about how to aid or assist businesses with access into their actual businesses? Because right now, there are buildings down in Cleveland where wheelchairs have no access. So they can't literally get in.
We've talked about that. I, I don't know specifically what the design will look like. There's engineering requirements as it relates to the sidewalk. Um, I've had an outreach meeting with the Ark of Llamer County already, two meetings in particular about business access and, and improving the accessibility of those businesses. This project is primarily on the public right-of-way. Um, but I've already spoken with them, trying to find different ways. Their Main Street will help me um, push out some communications about there's, um, some tax, um, ability to write some things off for businesses when they make these improvements. But I'm also trying to explore, as we always do as staff, all avenues. If there's a way that I can write a grant to enable our businesses to be able to provide funding. Um, but again, this is not going to be touching the businesses in the sense of like, then I can't ensure, you know, that is the, is the bathroom in that business accessible.
Right.
So I'm, I'm trying to look for ways, um, if there is additional funding, and I've already spoke to, um, the Ark, and we're, we're in close communications and, and the Downtown Inc. and, um, DOLA and Main Street as well, trying to find different avenues for this. So, um, that is, it's a topic of conversation on our staff agendas as well.
Perfect. Those are my only suggestions, comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly, anything?
Uh, for key stakeholders, I love the idea of adding Safe Routes to School. I'd also maybe consider adding the Senior Center.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just for mobility kind of reasons too, and interest there. Um, but otherwise, I'm so excited. This plan looks fantastic, and it is a legacy project, absolutely. So it's gonna change our entire town. I love it. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Trustee Cannon.
No questions. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I don't think I've got anything to add, uh, great ideas from the rest of the board. And, uh, yeah, I thank you staff for putting this together. I, it seems like you guys have, uh, put a lot of thought into this. So to see all these organizations on here is, uh, is awesome. So, thank you.
Yeah, you put a lot of work into it. So thank you. Okay, um, next item is going to be the Strategic Planning Committee Feedback Summary. Ms. Huddling.
All right. Um, so every two years, the Board of Trustees, um, works on the strategic planning process, and a facilitator will come in and work with the Board of Trustees and the department heads. Patty will talk more about that, I'm sure, here in the coming weeks, about what that process will looks like. Um, and, and really, this is to kind of start off strong. We wanted to be able to have this new board hit the ground running. And so we wanted to do community feedback right-of-way. Um, some communities do it differently, and they have the board do the facilit, you know, the town hall or the facilitation process. Um, and they, and then they come back out and say, here's what we created. Do you like it? Um, we like to do true engagement. We really do want to know what the public wants. And just looking at our org chart, it goes residents, the board, and then staff. So we wanted to make sure that the voices were heard for our residents. So, um, I emailed out the Excel documents since it got a little, um, wonky in the packet there, and my apologies. Sometimes it happens with Excel and just the software issues. Um, so that was the online, um, the information. But we also held on March nineteenth the strategic plan, the town hall, and, and kind of the facilitated conversation, and we had folks attend that. So you can see all the results in your packet, and a lot of it does align with the twenty-twenty-three Community Survey. Um, if, I think that was, might, might have been on the board, onboarding packet, if you haven't gotten it. And if you need it, I can resend it. It's on our website. Um, and so I, I can quickly review some of those high-level themes. Um, I did a summary in your packet, and one of the first questions, uh, what is your vision for Wellington in the next two to three years? Um, folks focused on, you know, better infrastructure. We know that. We have a, we plan, a plan for that right now with the water and wastewater treatment plants and a lot of the old town street projects. So a lot of these things we are working on. Um, economic growth for businesses. There's a desire to have more and diverse commercial offerings. Um, a focus on additional development for recreational opportunities, including a facility or trails, additional community events. Um, there's still that sense of wanting to maintain a small-town feel to, to preserve that sense of Wellington and that friendly atmosphere. Um, a call for residents for good governance and transparency. Um, and then community cohesion. And I will say that this was during the election cycle. So some of those views, you just need to consider that. Um, it's always difficult during election time when you're asking for feedback. So some of the, um, information might be skewed in that sense. Um, and then in terms of, you know, where, where can we improve? Um, and one of those questions was, what obstacles do you believe face the town? Infrastructure challenges, unity, financial issues, um, resistance to change, water issues, and community engagement. Um, but then on the high, on a high note here of what do you love about Wellington, small-town feel, um, slightly more affordable than some of the neighboring city, cities. Um, community engagement, that strong sense of community, um, the local business presence, recreational opportunities again, and then proximity to other, um, neighboring towns with different amenities. So any questions on that? Really just to provide you a transparent look about the community feedback.
Questions? Questions?
Can I add something to that, please?
Sure.
Uh, turn, uh, lane over on the other side of town for, I mean, for the efficiency there. You know, I've been looking at that for a while, and I saw something posted up here not too long ago. Plenty of room. I don't know if we, I think that's a CDOT thing too, but we should be able to work with CDOT, with CDOT on that. So, I mean, I know the bridge is gonna take a long time. That would definitely help out a lot of the congestion over there.
Mm-hmm. You're talking on the off-ramp?
Uh, right, but that's coming back over this way.
So the front of the road? Okay.
You know, there's plenty of room over there to do it, and we just need to work with CDOT. Thank you.
Set it down.
I will send an email address where all of those complaints get sent to I. So I have a reminder set in my phone every two weeks to send a complaint to CDOT. So I will send you the email. It's, it's something that I know that there is a group of people here in town that send emails regularly trying to get that addressed. So it's not anything that...
Yeah, I think if we bring the city into it, um, hard and heavy, hopefully that can get, uh, taken care of. Thank you.
Yes.
Sometimes you call on people. I'm waiting. This is like my first regular meeting. Okay. Um, I just wanna say thank you for, for putting this together, and thank you to everybody that participated, both online and in person. Um, this being our first full regular meeting, I'm very encouraged by all of the answers. I feel like there are definitely some things that are absolutely in our control. Um, our governance, the way we respect one another, how we work with the community, and then the engagement piece. We can do something about those things immediately, and so I'm very excited to work with all of you on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh.
Quick feedback too. Um, I am so happy so many people participate, especially online. Uh, there were some people who showed up in person, and even though there wasn't a lot in quantity of people, we were able to, you know, really analyze the data that they provide us through sticky notes, and really dive deep into why are you saying that? How do we put all these things together? And like, what is the sense of what we're trying to accomplish and what you love and want? So those conversations were very intimate, um, with residents who came and, uh, so very valuable, uh, really to my understanding of, uh, those groups and, and what they love about Wellington, want to change, or want to see in the future. So I, I wanna say thank you to everyone who participated, and the data we receive back is gonna be super helpful for planning the next couple of years. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Don't go too far. Um, all right. So next, uh, we have an award to present. Um, this award is from the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, this is the first time the town has submitted and also received this award, and it's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. Um, in order to receive the award, town had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines and criteria for effective budgeting presentation, and not just the budget itself. Well, the panel of independent reviewers rated our submission as proficient as a policy document, financial plan, and operations guide and communications device. Um, while preparing the budget is a genuine team effort, and a lot of people put in on that. Um, the certificate of recognition is to be presented to Ms. Kelly Huddling, our Deputy Town Administrator, as the individual who spearheaded this project, educated herself on the criteria needed to receive the award, and created the document for submission. Um, so thank you, Ms. Kelly Huddling, and I have a, I have a little thing to present to you.
We gotta get a good backup, just to drop down from expectations. Yeah.
All right. One, two, three.
Good. Very good. So awesome.
All right, Mister Clerk, will you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Mister Mayor, before we move on, I'd like to make a comment on that presentation.
Go for it.
If that's, if that's all.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, I wanna congratulate the Town of Wellington, the staff of Wellington. Uh, getting this award is, is not a free. You don't just pay some money and they give it to you. This takes effort. This is the gold standard for municipal budgets. Uh, the gold standard nationwide. I've worked with many communities, and none of those communities have ever gotten the GFOA Outstanding Budget Award. It is, a budget is, is, is a simple document. It's, it's, it's how much money you're gonna spend, what your revenues look like. And it could be as simple a spreadsheet as it was here in Wellington, seven, eight, nine years ago. Um, but to go beyond just a spreadsheet that says, here's the money we expect to get, this is the money we expect to spend, the GFOA Outstanding Budget Award gives you guidelines so that you can have that communications document, so that you can have that policy document to the community. When I was running for trustee, one of the questions that kept coming up is how do we, we get financial transparency and accountability in, in, in Wellington? And I would always say, well, you need to have that GFOA Outstanding Budget Award. And why is that important? That, that says that we care enough as a community to want the very best, to be able to communicate that, that to the community. It shows everybody not only how government finance works, but how we care for government finance. Kelly, I applaud you in your efforts in doing this. I think that's, uh, this is something that we need to put on our town hall walls. This is, yes. We are good governance. We are good, uh, financially and fiscally responsible individuals, both as a board and as by staff. So thank you so much for your efforts to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, okay, Mister Clerk. Will you please read the titles of the consent agenda?
April nine, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. April sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, special meeting minutes. Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, appointing officers and municipal judge until twenty-twenty-six election. Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution of the, the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, appointing and confirming appointments to the Box Elder Basin Regional Stormwater Authority.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second. Mister Clerk, may your roll call please?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Um, next we will have reports. Ms. Garcia?
That happened really fast. Um, so a couple of things. Um, I too would like to applaud Kelly for her work on this, on the GF Way Award. It was something that she approached, um, Mister Rhodes and I about probably last September. And when I talked to Don this week, I told him that we'd received the award and that, you know, that Kelly'd be receiving it. And he, he said, you know, there's nobody who deserves it more because of all the work that she did. I mean, he saw all the extra effort that it took to create this document. And, and it, and he knows as a governmental accounting professional exactly what this means. So for Wellington, this is a huge, a huge achievement for us, and it wouldn't have happened without Kelly just really bulldogging it the whole way. Cause it was not an easy task. Um, another thing I'd like to talk about is we will be embarking on strategic planning. We are, I'm talking with a consultant who I think is a good, will be a good match for the Board of Trustees, for board development and strategic planning. So saying that, we'll need to schedule dates to host, hold those meetings. So if you can send me dates that you will be gone, and that includes the weekends, um, like from now until the end of June.
Fishing trips, Dave.
That would be, that, that would be really helpful. Um, or, you know, what, usually it's easier to just tell me the date you, you're not available. Um, so that way we can start planning some time, um, to, to have the, that strategic planning. And last but not least, we do have next Monday, the Regional Elected Officials Meeting, um, out at the ranch. And we have, um, Mayor Shosse, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Mason, and Trustees Daly, Cannon, and Moyer attending. So we should have a good group. I'll be there as well. So thank you all for attending the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Um, staff communication's been included in the packet. Um, are there any questions from the board on these items? No?
Sheriff Fain may want to.
Yeah. Sheriff Fain, do you wanna, do you wanna speak on anything?
Not, not to put you on the spot, but...
So I appreciate the opportunity, Mister Mayor. So I, actually, I came here because I wanted to welcome the new, the new trustees. So I am your sheriff, and I'm very fortunate and blessed to, to do that, and, uh, to serve the citizens of, of Wellington, uh, through Sergeant Cherry. So, um, again, I just wanna say, so you had a name with a face, or a face with a name. You knew who I was. I wanted to welcome you, congratulate you on your new appointment, your new elections. Um, I know elections are not an easy task sometimes, but thank you for being willing to step up to represent your communities, for all of you for what you do. So if there's anything that we can do as a sheriff's office, or I can do as a, as a fellow Llamer County citizen, please let me know. So welcome, congratulations, and we're gonna have a lot of fun together in the next couple of years. So, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff. Um, board reports. Trustee Moyer.
I have nothing at this time, although I do want to say thank you to staff for answering my questions, uh, efficiently and quickly.
Trustee Wiegand?
No reports.
Trustee Daly?
Uh, I wanted to thank the town, uh, for doing the very last minute, of course, for the storm recovery. Uh, the pick, the drop-off loc, not picking up, drop-off location for branches from down trees. Um, uh, those kind of scenarios just is, they're such a great catalyst for community. Um, so I wanted to thank for that portion. Not only did people get to clean up their yards and stuff, I saw neighbors to go, come together. I had a group of ten volunteers that went to certain houses to help pick up things. I took personally five and a half loads of truck and trailer packed ten feet high to that location, um, and saw people I knew there doing the same for others, and it was, it was beautiful. So those small things in, in a state of a difficult situation bring community together, and it was lovely. And it's why Wellington's small and neighbors are brilliant. So I wanted to thank you for, um, providing that opportunity. This Saturday is Arbor Day, speaking of trees. Um, so, and the town is doing, uh, uh, an event for Arbor Day. It's gonna be at the Park Meadows Park. Um, on Saturday from ten to two, there's gonna be plenty of activities and the fun, uh, park play kind of items that are out for that. Pros members will be there volunteering. Um, so it'll be a great time. So please come out on Saturday from ten to two. Um, yesterday was the Main Street, uh, downtown cleanup, where they had over sixty volunteers, is what I'm hearing. Um, entire organizations came, including the Pooter FFA, or not Pooter, oh my gosh, Wellington Middle High, Middle School, Middle High School FFA. I totally messed myself up. Sorry. Oh, I've always gone to Pooter FFA things, so that's my fault. So a girls' outshoot, Boys and Girls Club, the Kindness Club from the Wellington Middle High School. Uh, town staff was there. Welly, the Mammoth, our new mascot, was there, which was awesome. Um, and tons of other community members, real estate agents coming out to like check out our town and learn more about it by volunteering. That's fantastic. So thank you to all those volunteers. That was also an incredible experience I got to participate in. Um, and then for strategic planning, I was hoping that we could do that prior to CML. Um, if anybody, we could maybe focus on those dates in June. The reason being is we have our directives, we have our plans, we know our focus, then we can really concentrate that effort into getting the most out of CML that will impact the items that we're working on strategically. So um, as we're working on our schedules to do that, if everybody can kind of consider that. So prior to June seventeenth, eighteenth is when it starts, right? That, you say June eighteenth. June seventeenth's my birthday, so that's why I remember it. You guys are welcome to celebrate with me at CML. And then tomorrow happens to be, um, Administrative Professionals Day, a national day recognizing administrative professionals. And we have, as we've heard of tonight, some amazing administrative professionals in the Town of Wellington. So, um, I wanted to say thank you, um, on behalf of me and everybody on the board. So, um, we really appreciate all you do, and our town is better because you're here supporting and administering our town. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Protim?
Just a quick update. We've got the Llamer County Regional Opioid Debatement Council on Thursday. We did have, there was a slight hiccup in approving the grant for a harvest farm at our last month's session, but we should be, I do expect we'll be having that approved on Thursday. So that was the amount of $400,000 for those guys in addition to another $100,000 that we had approved for them about two months back now. So very excited to report that.
Awesome. Tracy Cannon?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, most of you know that I ran for office with a focus on bringing more commercial and economic development to Wellington, to provide more jobs, to provide more revenues to the town, to provide services to the community, and more opportunities to our residents as well. One of those, and I'm still important and stuff, that's gonna be a priority of mine. But I would like to recommend possibly either a work session or a board meeting so we can start discussing the groundwork that's needed so that Wellington could be in a position so that it could actually encourage that type of economic development. Specifically, I'd like that work session to revolve around switching to home rule. Now, becoming a home rule community is most of you, well, I doubt if you know this or not, but it's a three-step process. The first step is, is how do we choose to become home rule? And there's two ways to do that. The first way could be a petition that's signed by, I think, probably 10% of our registered voters. And that, that's one approach. The other approach is the Board of Trustees can actually pass an ordinance. And that ordinance basically establishes an election for a charter commission. Now, the charter commission is the second step. You know, once the, once that goes to a vote, charter commissioners, commissioners are elected. They fill out a petition, much like you would fill out a petition to become a trustee or the mayor. It goes to a vote. That could be a November, Gonzales, it could be a special election. Once the charter commission is elected, they have by law 180 days to write the charter. Then the charter itself goes back to the community for ratification by the voters, up or down. If it passes, we're become a home rule community. And as most of you know, home rule communities have greater powers and authorities that are established than what statutory towns have. So what I would recommend, if we do this in a work session, I'd like to be specific about maybe directing staff to bring information to the trustees so we can have a good discussion about this. Verification of the process for home rule. There are materials available in the Colorado Municipal League and there are also other communities that, for example, well, I think just about every community in the North Front Range is a home rule community except Wellington. But I'd like for them to talk about, to talk about the process, to work out some of the, you know, to discuss some of the procedures, more about electing the charter commission. I'd like for them also to take a look at what are some of the advantages or disadvantages of being a home rule community as it relates to finance, economic development, planning, for example. Home rule communities have authorities that go beyond statutory authorities for planning purposes and land use decisions. So I think a good discussion on that by the board to determine whether or not we want to consider an ordinance to put a charter commission on, let's say, the November ballot this, this fall.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
I will schedule it.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
I'd like to know what that structure looks like and what the alternatives are related to. Because I know when you move to home rule, there's a lot of things that change related to the Board of Trustees, town manager, and mayor positions. I would like to know more about how all of that operates. I've got a lot of reading to do because I've not done a lot of digging into the home rule. I'd like to know, switching over from statutory to home rule, if we're giving up a lot of the statutory rules and regulations that Colorado follows as we are the statutory. The cost involved in switching from a statutory to a home rule. The, the financial aspects related to additional elections. Those are kind of some of the additional information that I would like brought back at this time.
Do you have anything else for a board report?
Yes, as we are transitioning into spring and summer, which is some of my favorite times of the year. I know that there was discussion this last fall of looking at an ADA inclusivity barbecue. And we were looking at how that connected with the town, LCSO, and the Board of Trustees. I know that we transitioned into the colder months when this first started coming up. I would like to, if it is a possibility, continue that discussion of having a barbecue that brings everybody in our community, invites LCSO, Ark of Llamer County, all of these entities and groups to Wellington to engage in meeting people of all different abilities. I hate calling it a disability, so I'm just all different abilities. If that's something that our board would continue to support and work with the town on this time. Good? Okay.
For, for this fall?
No, for, for summer.
Well.
Is that?
Yeah.
Perfect. Got it.
All right. I don't have anything, anything to report, other than I'm looking forward to working with everybody here. And appreciate you initiating everyone yet. So just keep doing good things and all that. So thank you, guys. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Clerk, make a roll call, please. Do you want a second, Mr. Mayor?
I'll second.
There you go. I'll second. Mr. Clerk, make your roll call, please.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now adjourn the regular meeting, time being 8:10 PM.